At the meeting. Meeting is called to order. Um, for all Commissioner Strike. We're gonna adjust the speakers on our end. We heard you Commissioner Strike, but not as loud as you normally are.
Okay, how's this?
Keep talking if you don't mind.
Okay, uh, kind of a normal conversation. Testing, one, two, three.
It's a little echoey, so we might see if we can finagle it again, um. Would you mind giving us another sentence or two?
Sure, let me try something here.
I'm not gonna be able to.
Try that, any difference?
Possibly, maybe keep talking a little bit more. It started to sound a little clear at the end there.
Okay, um. Testing, one, two, three. Sound check.
Yeah, I think that's better.
Testing, okay.
Thank you Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Spinelli.
Um, here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here, and Commissioner Strike was loud and clear with no echo from me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Krishna.
Here.
And I am present, and Commissioner Anderson is excused, and Commissioner Winchester is unexcused at this moment.
I'm here.
Oh, is that Commissioner Winchester? Commissioner Winchester? All right, proceeding as though Commissioner Winchester is unexcused, if he is here, if he wants to chime in again, but.
Yeah, yes, I'm here. Uh, just can't link to the Teams meeting because it says the address is invalid, but I have a phone hookup.
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
I'm here by phone, I can hear everything clearly, but the Microsoft Teams link is not working for me.
Um. Can you go into your Outlook and trying to get in through there?
Yeah, I've clicked on every link and it says the address is invalid.
Um, all right, then. It just wouldn't work. Um. Yeah, if you have a comment, if you could please wait until there is a gap, and just say that you would like to be in the speaking queue, just because I'll be keeping track of other people as well, and then, um, we'll take, yeah, other comments will just show, we'll deal with it when we get to it, I suppose.
Great, and maybe in the interim, maybe email me another link to it that I can try, and I'll be on the phone listening.
All right, we may see what we can do. All right, moving on to minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? You could either type into the chat, or if you're Commissioner Winchester, you can speak.
No disclosures.
Moved by Commissioner Winchester, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. And is there any opposition? Seeing no opposition, minutes are approved. Moving on to special order of business, disclosures. Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Looney.
Uh, yes, I would like to disclose that for case twenty twenty zero zero eight one, which is the Spruce Street Extension Design Study Report, and like many of the design projects, the petitioner is one of the major clients of mine, although I have not talked to them specifically about this project or their consultant. Um, I do have quite a bit to add for this project, but like many of our projects, this petitioner is a, is our client for many projects.
Thank you for your disclosure. I believe based on your comments that you should be able to proceed absent any objection from the body. So you know objection, you will be able to participate. Commissioner Gardner?
Um, yes, I was asking for case number twenty twenty, um, dash zero zero seven eight, so I won't be participating in the consent agenda for the resolution for approval of that case.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Quinn?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
And I also have no disclosures. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Strike.
Commissioner Strike, moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. And, uh. Someone might need to mute their side. All right, I believe that's been dealt with. Um. We call for a vote on the consent agenda. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson? Is, excuse, sorry, Commissioner Looney? Did you?
Uh, yes.
And Commissioner Gardner is, um, has said that he will not participate because he was not there. Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yeah.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, and that motion passes. Moving on to our regular agenda, our. Item five, F five, case twenty twenty dash zero zero eight one. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you. The municipality of Anchorage Project Management and Engineering Department is requesting planning and zoning commission approval of the design study report for the Spruce Street Extension and Upgrades project. The location of the study area is provided in Figure one in the staff report. The project proposes to upgrade Spruce Street between East Sixty-Eighth Avenue and East Sixty-Fourth Avenue to neighborhood collector standards, and to extend Spruce Street from East Sixty-Fourth Avenue to East Dowling Road. The need for an upgrade of Spruce Street was originally identified in the two thousand six Abbott Loop Traffic Calming Study, and the design for this project began two thousand nine. The primary goal of this project is to connect Spruce Street to Dowling Road and to expand the collector grid while upgrading the street to address drainage, install non-motivated facilities, and provide ADA accommodations. Reviewing the design study report and looking at traffic conditions, the applicant completed a traffic study for the Spruce Street corridor in May twenty ten, and was revised in twenty sixteen to reflect changing conditions. Figure two in the report provides an overview of the speeds and traffic volumes reported in the area in two thousand five to two thousand nine. Average annual daily traffic, or AAT, volumes on Spruce Street have declined from eight hundred fifty-two, as cited in the two thousand five, two thousand nine study, to four hundred seventy-two in twenty eighteen. The two thousand five to two thousand nine study found an AAT of about twenty-six hundred on Norm Drive, and although recent data for all of Norm Drive was not immediately available, some existing data does show that ADT at Norm Drive and East Sixty-Fourth Street was down to six hundred and thirty-six in twenty eighteen. The proposed Spruce Street upgrade and extension would be built to neighborhood collector standards, and the forecast traffic volumes would be about one thousand to two thousand five hundred for the extended Spruce Street corridor, which is on the lower side for neighborhood collectors intended to accommodate an ADT between two thousand and ten thousand. According to the two thousand six Abbott Loop Traffic Calming Study, the primary issues on the Spruce Street corridor were speeding, pedestrian facilities, and roadway upgrades. When considering results from the public process, the lack of pedestrian accommodations and speeding were the two primary issues. Looking at existing land use, as documented in the DSR, the existing land use is primarily a single-family residential. There is also a large existing snow storage site at Dowling Road adjacent to the proposed Spruce Street extension north of East Sixty-Fourth Avenue. Figures three through six of, in the report, show photos displaying existing land uses along the Spruce Street corridor from East Sixty-Eighth Avenue to East Sixty-Fourth Avenue. Looking at zoning and future land use, as shown in the existing zoning map in Figure six, the project corridor traverses several residential zoning districts ranging from R five low-density residential to the R two M mixed residential district. Per the twenty forty land use plan, and as shown in Figure seven in the report, the land use designation for most of Spruce Street corridor is single-family and two-family. In general, the project is mostly consistent with the surrounding predominantly single-family land uses. And looking at the preferred alternative in the design study report, the applicant has proposed two alternatives, a no-action alternative and the extend and reconstruct roadway alternative that is illustrated in the typical sections shown in figures nine and ten of the report. The extend and reconstruct roadway alternative is identified as a preferred. The recommended alternative for each segment includes sidewalks and multi-use trails throughout the corridor, which addresses the community's desire for pedestrian accommodations on Spruce Street. Bicycle lanes are indicated on the typical sections in figures nine and ten, however, they are not proposed to be marked or maintained as such. Instead, they will be paved shoulder-bikeways as called for in the twenty-ten Anchorage Bicycle Plan. The project proposes eleven-foot-wide vehicle travel lanes. Per the graph in Figure eleven, the Anchorage Design Criteria Manual would allow for ten-foot lanes in this project. Given the Spruce Street corridor's low existing and projected traffic volumes, coupled with lower anticipated percentage of ADT in the peak hour of about twelve point eight percent, providing narrower ten-foot lanes could help calm traffic on the corridor, which would be consistent with the underlying two thousand six Abbott Loop Traffic Calming Study and the Anchorage Vision Zero Traffic, uh, Vision Zero Action Plan. However, the project team believes that trucks will make up more than three percent of the traffic stream due to the snow dump at the intersection of Spruce Street and East Dowling Road, so they're opting to use the wider lane width of eleven feet. The attached sidewalk from East Sixty-Eighth Avenue to East Sixty-Fourth Avenue was proposed to be five feet wide, which is the minimum width identified in the guiding design documents, and is often too narrow to allow for comfortable bi-directional pedestrian travel. This is particularly the case for pedestrians with disabilities. Given the constraints of a five-foot sidewalk and the community's emphasis on pedestrian facilities for the corridor, a recommended condition of approval is to provide an attached sidewalk width of at least six feet on Spruce Street between East Sixty-Eighth Avenue and East Sixty-Fourth Avenue. Looking at concurrence with existing plans, the preferred alternatives advanced several policies of both the twenty twenty comprehensive plan and the twenty forty land use plan. Supportive policies from those plans include, in the twenty twenty comprehensive plan, policy thirty-seven, policy thirty-eight, fifty-three, and fifty-four. In the twenty forty land use plan, policy six point three is consistent. In the twenty-ten Anchorage Bicycle Plan, again, the Anchorage Bicycle Plan proposes a paved shoulder-bikeway on Spruce Street only the project quarter, and the project includes this facility as discussed, however, it does not include the W eleven dash one bicycle symbol signage as required by the twenty-ten Anchorage Bicycle Plan for paved shoulder-bikeways. A recommended condition of approval is for the project to add this signage. Uh, the two-seven Anchorage Pedestrian Plan, the Anchorage Pedestrian Plan lists the Spruce Street corridor from Dowling Road to East Sixty-Eighth Avenue as missing a sidewalk link. This project's inclusion of the pedestrian facilities would complete this missing sidewalk link identified in the plan. Looking at Vision Zero, this project provides new non-motivated accommodations for all modes and has lighting along the corridor. However, the project increases speed limit from, or is proposing to increase the speed limit from twenty-five miles per hour to thirty miles per hour, and in doing so is accommodating the cited eighty-fifth percentile of vehicle speed of thirty-two miles per hour, rather than attempting to reduce that speed. And this practice is an issue that is cited by the National Transportation Safety Board and reiterated in the Anchorage Vision Zero Action Plan, specifically that raising the speed limit to match the eighty-fifth percentile of speed may lead to even higher operating speeds, raising the eighty-fifth percentile, and encouraging more dangerous travel speeds in the future. As demonstrated by recent research illustrated in figures fourteen and fifteen of the report, even modest increases in vehicle speeds can significantly impact pedestrian safety. In addition, reducing vehicle speed decreases stopping distance, increases visibility, and can help prevent crashes. For example, as cited in the Anchorage Vision Zero Action Plan, a reduction in speed from thirty miles per hour to twenty-five miles, twenty-five miles per hour decreases stopping distance by forty-five feet on average, or about twenty-three percent. Speeding was also a primary concern in the two thousand six Abbott Loop Traffic Calming Study that formed the basis of this project, and a lower speed limit could provide a more contextual design for the low-density residential land uses and the low projected traffic volumes discussed earlier in this report. However, the traffic department has not yet had a chance to review this proposed speed limit increase. A recommended condition of approval is therefore to resolve with the traffic, with traffic, the need for increasing the speed limit on Spruce Street from twenty-five miles per hour to thirty miles per hour. For public comments, one public comment was received that was in support of the upgrades to Spruce Street, but expressed concerns of the extension of East Dowling Road and increased traffic speeds and volumes on Spruce Street. A full comment is available in the comments section of this report. The Abbott Loop Community Council did not submit any comments. Departmental comments, there are no objections from reviewing agencies, and the traffic department is supportive of the preferred alternative. With that being said, the department recommends approval of the preferred alternative identified in the context Sensual Solutions Design Study Report for this Spruce Street Extension and Upgrades project, subject to the conditions on page sixteen of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Type into the chat, or Commissioner Winchester, actually Commissioner Winchester's been added now, so if you have any questions for staff, please type into the chat. Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yes, this is Commissioner Looney, and this could be a question for the petitioner too, but I'll try it with the staff. Uh, do you know whether the project evaluated, um, the, a continuous bike lane, um, through the sixty, the Sixty-Fourth Avenue intersection? Um, I see that they recommended an alternative that has what they call chokers, where they narrow the lanes and eliminate the bike lane through there. And this may be related to why they don't currently have the bike lane, um, I guess striped to be a bike lane because it's not continuous.
Uh, I'll let the petitioner, or the petitioner fully answer that question. I will say that I, per the Anchorage, twenty-ten Anchorage Bicycle Plan, the facility is actually intended to be a paved shoulder-bikeway, I believe, so not a full bike lane, um, and that might have something to do with it, but I do know, or based on what I've seen of the designs, the bike, the paved shoulder-bikeway does not traverse the intersection, so it is interrupted by the intersection currently, but I'll let the petitioner speak to that more.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I'll wait, I'll wait for that. But in general, I definitely support the project, and I think it's, I'm behind everything all the way to make the connectivity. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue, can we hear from the applicant? Is the applicant online?
Uh, yeah, Julie Mackler for the applicant.
All right.
And so there's a discontinuation of right-of-way width throughout the project. The south half has sixty feet, and the north half has a hundred feet. So trying to keep a continuation is difficult within that sixty feet.
All right, and did you want to speak to the project in general, or were you just going to answer?
I was trying to answer Mr. Looney's question.
Okay. You also have time to speak to the application in general, if you would like.
Well, the application in general, we have two different zones. From Sixty-Fourth South is the sixty feet of right-of-way, and we're limited what we can do in that sixty feet of right-of-way. Um, the north section from Sixty-Fourth to Dowling Extension has the hundred feet, and so we're able to give more room to, um, pretty much everything on the bike lanes, the pedestrian facilities, and such.
All right, you have nine minutes and thirteen seconds remaining for rebuttal. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yes, this is Commissioner Looney again, and so this is, um, so Julie, I guess the intent of the question is, number one is, I guess I definitely see the value of traffic calming, because, um, I know the neighborhood is, they want the connectivity, but they're all concerned about speeding and too high volumes, so I do see the value of traffic calming, and I, and I know that our company has actually designed quite a few of these choker intersections too, but we, um, we should seriously consider maybe a more effective calming, um, like a vertical speed hump, speed bump type thing. I know it's difficult to do that in a collector, um, but I think they've, we found to be much more effective, because I'm a little concerned about, um, traveling on Spruce and through the intersection of eighty, of Sixty-Fourth, and you, you lose the bike lane just through the intersection, and you get it back again on the other side, but you're really forced to merge into the, um, car lane through the intersection. If there's any way to try to keep that continuous, I would, I would appreciate that.
We have looked at that. There are multiple intersection alternatives for Sixty-Fourth and Spruce, and because of the few in the intersection and the very tight intersection, we really can't keep that through there. Brad Melnick has been trying to chime in here, and he's been texting me that he's been having difficulty. He's our design engineer.
Mr. Melton, are you able to get on the line now? All right.
He seems to be, he says he's muted. But we have, if you look through our supplemental, we have looked at numerous intersection alternatives, and it's, um, very tight, and the problem is the impact to private property owners. We will have to do a right-of-way acquisition at Sixty-Fourth and Spruce, and so we picked the alternative that will do the least amount of right-of-way acquisition, which means the least amount of impact to property owners.
Uh, this is Commissioner Looney, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, so really, um, Julie, the question would be not so much to push the footprint wider, but to just, um, um, to maybe not build chokers, not to bring those curbs in at the intersection. I know it's a design detail, but it's significant. Uh, you know, I generally, I support the connectivity for this project and the fact that you're accommodating all the different modes of transportation. It's just, like I say, it's a detail where we essentially lose, you're missing the bike lane right where you need it the most, right through the intersection, um, and it's, I know we've even done it this way, but I guess we've learned that the better way is not so much to rely on the choker, but to maybe do a vertical deflection, um, so that way we have a continuous bike lane.
Yeah, we can look at that and see if we can get a smoother transition through the two sections and with a continuous bike lane.
And like I say, I don't want to get mired down with details, because really, in general, I support the project, I think it's great. Traffic calming is something that the public has, um, I guess I've seen in quite a few comments that people are worried about more higher-speed traffic is just a way to do it, but I really want to accommodate the on-street bikers. Of course, I think you've done a real good job on, on the presentation, and I, I see you have the memo, memo that goes through, um, seven different options for how to treat that intersection, which is great, you know, from the roundabout, mini-roundabout, and things like that, too. Um, I just like, I would have loved to seen a version that just has the non-chokers, just the standard, um, curb returns, so that the bike lanes go through the intersection. Um, I'll leave it at that, but like I say, I don't want to get mired down with details, um, at this point. But all in all, though, I definitely support the project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before moving on to our next commissioner in the queue, I just want to make a note to Brad Melnick. I looked on our line here, and we have not muted you. Um, we see that you're online on, um, our webcast, but on Teams, but want to make sure that you've called in on your phone to the phone number that was emailed out to you. Uh, moving on to our next question, Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. Um, I was just curious if you had any thoughts or comments or concerns on the proposed conditions of approval?
And I believe that question was directed to our applicant.
The applicant, yes.
This is Melinda Tsu, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, Julie and I are on the project team together, so we represent the applicant. Yeah, I've looked at that, um, I look, I looked at the staff report. As far as increasing the width for, for the sidewalk from five foot to six foot, I'm certainly amenable, and I think the team is, we will look for space to see if we can make that happen. So right now, there's an eight-foot pathway with one-foot shoulders shown on each side. We believe where that pathway is, they don't really need that shoulder, so, you know, there's some space to play around with and possibly come up with that extra foot for the sidewalk width. As far as, um, so what were some of the other ones? The other one was, um, including bike striping for the bike lane. You know, that's, that's something we'll work through with the traffic department. Um, you know, sometimes they're, you know, they try to limit how much bike striping for those particular symbols are installed throughout Anchorage because they're a little difficult to re-stripe, but, you know, we'll work through that with them and see if we can get them to agree on that placement. So again, I will be promoting that that be installed. And then, um, the other one on speed limit, uh, right now, it's proposed as thirty-five miles per hour. Um, you know, currently, that's what the design road speed, um, design percentage percentile for the eighty-fifth percentile. You know, we, we start there with the traffic department. We'll see, and as far as it's written, um, that comment just says, you know, work that out and see what you can get, um, the traffic department to agree upon. So again, we'll work through that with, um, I think it was mostly those three that I recall.
Yeah, I think it's just those three. Thanks for your comments on that. And then the other thing I was just curious about, it just struck me that the, the traffic volume on these streets, um, had dropped so dramatically over this period of time, and I was wondering if you had any idea as to what the nature or basis of that, that was?
Yeah, I, I don't completely know the history. I know the job started off in about two thousand nine. I think they went back and they did additional traffic counts, and it showed that it actually dropped somewhere like in twenty fourteen. Not sure I, I understand why that is. It could be throughout time, you know, people are utilizing Elmore Moore and not cutting through that area. Not sure. You know, if Dell was able to, uh, call in, you know, maybe Brad can share, you know, what that analysis was, you know, if they had thoughts on that.
Okay, yeah, I guess I, I don't know if that, um, I just didn't know if that played in any way, and so you were thinking for the, for the design, but I'm, I mean, I, I'm happy to see the connection go through as well, and I think in general, um, it looks like it's, it's well thought out and communicated, um, with the community. So thanks, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Hodges?
Uh, just a quick clarification, the, so the, condition number two, there's bicycle symbol signage being proposed, there's no striping being proposed in the conditions, so just so the, uh, the commission is aware, there's no, they would be approving, um, the installation of signage, not striping.
Oh, okay, that's, that's actually an easier one to push through. For the team and for traffic. So we'll work with them on that.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I saw that there were some Class A wetlands within the project area. Are they within the right-of-way, the extension, or could you share the location? And then, um, just another quick question, which is that I had seen that there were a couple of community concerns about their secondary alley access, and just to, I wanted to confirm that that access will be maintained along Spruce Street.
This is Brad, can you hear me finally?
Yes, we can.
Oh, wow, oh, great. Um. Melinda and Julie, you guys were spot on with all the other issues. Um. Melinda and Julie, you guys are spot on with all the other issues. So the first, the one was about the alley, and the other was?
About the wetlands.
There may be some wetland impacts. We are definitely going to have to do some core permitting, and we're going to be starting that right after the 65%. Dell and the municipality worked with the Heritage Land Bank and the Corps on the snow disposal facility, and those were previously mapped. There's some minimal impacts that are there. And again, a lot of the impacts are going to be, as the extension moves forward, there's going to be some excavation in some areas there that might be dewatered a little bit. So we're going to try to minimize that as we, from north from 64th to Dellie. But there's likely to be some impacts, yes. And then the alley access, I think I know what you're talking about. The alleys will be connected. There are some secondary driveways that will have to be discussed on a case-by-case basis within the traffic department and the municipality. Some people actually have kind of backyard access that's kind of been added over the years.
Do you have any further questions, Commissioner Krishna?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I wanted to reiterate Commissioner Looney's comment, and that is regarding the choke point at the intersection whereby the bike lanes are being cut off, and then they're picked up again another, say, 50 feet past the opposite intersection line. These intersection lines, these choke points are really choking off the bicyclists and thrusting them back into the traffic. And I think this was Commissioner Looney's concern. And I don't know that it was, his concern was really heard by the petitioner as a concern. And we do want you to, I, along with Mr. Looney, I believe, want you to retake a look at that choke point there.
Thank you, we will. This is Brad again. We will. There's a couple of things that we can do with putting them up onto, having those areas, we can actually move them up onto and go across the crosswalk in those areas, those intersections. Looking at the pedestrian movements, 64th is also the route that a lot of kids take to school, and that's also a school bus route. So the intersection at 64th has been definitely a focus, and we'll look to see if we can continue that. It's also been requested many times for that to be either a roundabout or a choker intersection, both for traffic calming and to reduce the pedestrian crossing distance. So all of those kind of need to be wrapped up in the one intersection, but we will definitely take another look at the bike facilities.
As it's presented currently, the bicyclists are thrust into the traffic lane, um, and now they're fighting the vehicle traffic through the intersection until their lane opens up again. And I think, I've been in these situations, these are accidents waiting to happen. Thank you.
I'm going to chime in and speak at this moment, too, since it's related to the same issue. Just kind of going off of Commissioner Looney's points, he mentioned such things as speed bumps and completely eliminating the curb cutouts. I would be a little hesitant to completely dis abandon that, and particularly to put in a speed bump. I do know that the fire department currently does not really like the use of many speed bumps because that can impact their ability to respond to accidents. Additionally, I know that curb cutouts specifically, when you're looking from a walking perspective, especially with children, it cuts down the distance that they have to walk through the intersection. I think a good compromise solution that you might want to look into is Austin has started looking into curb cutouts that don't extend fully into the intersection. They do so by kind of dome bumps that wouldn't go across the whole street, but just in that curbed intersection area. And I think that is a compromise that would keep extension, the curb extension, while eliminating the safety impacts on bicycles. I would be hesitant to go ahead and modify this when we've had commenters from, I believe it's, I can't remember if it's Goal Zero, but the pedestrian, people that focus on that and completely abandoned the pedestrian safety factors that they looked in. So I wouldn't want to see that completely thrown out. However, a minor modification like the Austin curb extensions would be something that I think should be looked at. Commissioner Looney, did you have another question?
Uh, yes, this is Commissioner Looney. I think we're focusing on the right things here, just great. All these ideas where we want to slow down the cars, but we also want to take into account the pedestrian movements and safety for everybody. And there's, the design they show here is, like I say, I can tell you that we designed intersections just like this 10 years, 15 years ago. But there's things that have been done lately with center refuge islands for pedestrians that are able to accommodate both the through bikers and the Peds. So kind of, it's a compromise is what it can, things like that. And I don't want to sit here and say, here's the better design. But I guess as long as the design team is looking at these other alternatives, I think it's this direction I'd like to see this thing go. It'd be great. But some way to not cut off the bikers going through the intersection. The whole idea of sending a biker into the crosswalk is not the way to go. You really, once you're out there pretending like, or acting like a car in the vehicle lane or on the roadway, you want to stay that way. You don't want to jump from car mode to pedestrian mode back, kind of thing. So all I can do is ask the design team to consider these other alternatives. And maybe, you know, currently, I noticed that condition approval number two was talking about provide the signs for a bike lane. And you really have a hard time signing the thing as a bike lane if it's so discontinuous. It's only there for a block, and it's gone for the other block. You know, we don't want to have one block of bike lane and then another block with nothing in between them. So it's not really a continuous corridor for bikes. They're not going to use it if it's not connected all the way, kind of thing. So signing it as a bike lane and keeping it continuous are related topics. Thank you. I'm trying not to beat this thing to death, but thanks for being patient.
I think these are all really valuable considerations. And thank you, Brian, and for everybody weighing in on this. I definitely think our design team will revisit, and, you know, non-motorist movements are very important for all of us in the municipality, for Vision Zero, you know, and for Bike Anchorage, and for everybody. So we'll take a good, strong look at this and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing no other questions for the applicant, you still have nine minutes and 13 seconds remaining if you would like to speak. Would any of the applicants like to speak further on this matter?
I think we're good as long as we've answered all the questions.
All right, thank you so much. Since this is not a public hearing and we have heard from the applicant, what is the will of the body? Feel free to type in to the, oh, motion by Commissioner Looney.
Okay, so I'll see if I can do this. In the case of 2020-0081, for the approval of the contact-sensitive solutions design side report for the Spruce Street extension, I move that we approve with the staff recommendations on page 16 of the report.
Moved by Commissioner Looney, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Looney, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, yes, I think we've gone through a pretty healthy conversation today. Actually, it was easy because it's a very well-done package. And every time I looked at things, it looks like they've already evaluated it. The whole issue about the intersection, they've gone through seven different options of how to improve the intersection. So it looks like it's pretty thoroughly done, and they meet the requirements of the contact-sensitive design process, and I'm ready to approve it with those conditions. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion at this time? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I think I'll just add, so it makes it onto the record here, too, that we discussed some options for the intersection and ways to kind of maintain continuity for the bike lane there. And I think that's consistent kind of with the goals of the Vision Zero project. And I just previously had kind of made a note to emphasize that I appreciated seeing the Vision Zero consideration and how that made it into the recommendations from the staff in the staff package here as well. And I think that is just consistent with the discussion we had about the bicycle lanes as well.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. The, I know that this is a contact, it's a study report. And so I'm not sure what we're approving since we've asked for some additional clarification and thought process to go into the context design. And the petitioner is going to take those reviews under advisement and take it back and go back to staff as they noted to look at some of the design alternatives. So the question I have is, what are we approving?
Mr. Hodges, perhaps you can weigh in here. Do you think that an amendment would be needed, an additional, uh, sorry, an additional condition of approval, or what's your insight at this moment?
Uh, the findings should suffice. So what the commission's approving is the 35% design as designed and the preferred alternatives as modified by the, by the conditions of approval. And so unless, if the commission doesn't have a specific design or a specific outcome they'd like to see, the findings would suffice in the sense that the, they would be on the record, and the petitioner can go back and look at further or different designs for the intersection potentially. And then at the next stage of the review process for, you know, on this end of things, it would be the Urban Design Commission looking at the 65% plans, at which point the staff would be able to look at the designs and consider the findings from the approval at the DSR stage from the commission and verify that the, you know, the petitioner looked into those alternative designs for the intersection and that they sort of went through their process to see what could be accommodated. So.
And this is Commissioner Strike. And if that's the process that's intended to be followed, I don't have a problem moving this forward then.
All right. Given that and seeing no other questions or people wanting to speak in the queue, call for a vote. We'll start with you, Commissioner Strike.
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. And that motion passes. Moving on to our public hearing, before we get started, I'm going to read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we hear the report for case 2020-0093?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Klotenance is requesting to rezone one tract of land totaling 40 acres from CEPCD, which is the Chuyaki River Plan Community Development District, to CER-10, which is Chuyaki River Low Density Residential Alpine Slope District. The petition site is located south of Eagle River Road and east of Vantage Avenue. That's up Eagle River Valley there. So Kloten would like to develop the petition site into a small neighborhood of 28 single-family homes. Construction is likely to occur in 2021 if the rezone is approved. The classification of CER-10 aligns with the surrounding residential with the same zoning designation. The proposed zoning matches the small subdivision plan compared to the current designation that calls for a large-scale plan development with phases. That's not their intention. This will result in a housing density of less than one dwelling unit per acre, which is consistent with the Chuyaki River Comp Plan. And up to 40 single-family homes could be developed on this site without creating a conflict within the comprehensive plan. As such, an accompanying amendment to the comprehensive plan is not required. No objections to this rezone were received from reviewing agencies. There was a community meeting held via Zoom, and the planning department mailed public hearing notices to the Eagle River Valley Community Council, which did not submit comments for this rezone. And as of the writing, there was no public comments that were received. So in the matters of the approval criteria, staff finds that criteria one has been met. By rezoning this property, development will allow, on this property will allow lots to be 1.25 acres to 7.5 acres in size, depending on the average slope of each lot. That allows for flexibility on lot sizes within the petition site. Compliant roadways, utilities, and pedestrian amenities will be installed as part of the proposed development. Criteria number two, staff has found that has been met. It complies with the 2006 Chuyaki River Comprehensive Plan update land use map, which identifies the site as residential, less than one to one dwelling unit per acre. There is locational criteria per the comp plan. So there's five of those standards within there, and staff has found all those have been met. Number one, the petition site is neighboring by detached, single-family CER-10 developments to the north, and the Eagle River Green Belt surrounds the rest of the property. That's the same, that meets standard two of vacant areas that are located adjacent to the large lot rural development. Standard three within that has been met. The petition site is outside of the water wastewater service boundaries. That's all going to be served by onsite systems. Four, the petition site is outside the downtown Eagle River Core. And five, the petition site requires, once again, onsite water and wastewater systems, and topographic challenges of the lots preclude a more intense development. In addition, policies from the Chuyaki River Comp Plan that are relevant to the rezoning are policy 3A3A, which identifies this as less than one dwelling unit per acre. Goal 3A1A, which ensures orderly, efficient pattern of development. And policy 23C for steep slopes. Steep slopes are present on the site, and they'll be subject to administrative site plan review if they plan on building on steep slopes. But that's within the criteria of AMC 210702OC. Standard three has been met. The rezoning is generally consistent with the zoning district. The purpose of the CER-10 district, as stated in AMC 211004OC14, is intended for use in areas where natural physical features and environmental factors such as slopes, alpine and forest vegetation, soils and geologic hazards require unique and creative designs for the development. The proposed development will not exceed one dwelling unit per acre, and all the necessary improvements will need to be completed as part of the future plan development. Staff finds that criteria four has been met. Staff finds that Criteria 4 has been met. The proposed CER-10 zoning neighbors the established developments to the north along Eagle River Road, and those are zoned CER-10 as well. And as I stated before, it is also surrounded by the Eagle River Green Belt. And Criteria 5 has been met. Facilities and services will be capable by the time of development. It's going to be accessed via Eagle River Road, which is, it's classified as a major arterial. And the petition site will have onsite water and wastewater services. Staff has found Criteria number six has been met. The proposed rezon is unlikely to adversely impact the natural environment. In addition to, there's some landscaping requirements. And it would be required to construct roads which meet the minimum requirements of Title 21 and Title 23. That's going to be at the time of the land use permit is applied for. For access, the site will ultimately be taking access from Eagle River Road, which is stated before, it's a major arterial. It's unlikely that the additional traffic generation will increase adverse impacts to the surrounding natural environment. Standard seven, staff has found that that's been met. It's surrounded by CEPI zoned, that's the Eagle River Green Belt. And once again, to the north is R-10, developed with single-family homes. Staff finds Criteria 8 has been met. This rezon is consistent with the petition site classification in the Chuyaki River Comprehensive Plan and will not exacerbate any undesired land use pattern. Criteria 9 has been met. It will not result in a split zone lot. And with that, Planning Department recommends approval of the rezoning from CEPCD to CER-10.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
I believe the petitioner's representative is attending the meeting as well.
Seeing no questions for staff, can we hear from the petitioner's representative?
Good evening. This is Craig Bennett with S4 Group. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Sean, who, the staff presented the rezon well. We're trying to rezon to R-10, which is the same as the residential in the area. And I'm just here to answer any questions that the board has.
All right. You have nine minutes and 39 seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Seeing nobody in the queue, do we have any members? We have no members from the public wishing to testify at this time. Petitioner, you have nine minutes and 39 seconds remaining for rebuttal, if you would like to use it.
No, thank you. I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, what's the will of the body? Commissioner Strike, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. In the matter of case number 2020-0093, a request for a rezon from CEPCD to CER-10 in the Chuyaki River, going into low-density residential. I move for approval.
Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. I think this is a very succinct, compact-type approval or proposal in front of us. I note that there has been no public testimony against, albeit or for, the property zoning, but that this is progressing in the right direction for the area, for the need for housing, and this will be good for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Commissioner Looney?
Yes, for the record, yeah, like Commissioner Strike said, this is a straightforward case. The case meets all nine criteria for rezon, as documented in the staff packet. So it looks pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will call for a vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That motion passes. I'd like to thank the petitioner for their time. Moving on to case 2020-0097, can we have the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of a new, multiple-family housing development with a density of six dwelling units per acre, which equates to nine dwelling units on this 1.5-acre parcel within the GR-1 district in Girdwood. The petition site is located west of the intersection of Gunny Sack Mine Road and the Aliaska Highway. The proposed housing development will consist of four structures, three duplexes, and one triplex. This parcel was previously granted a variance to construct Sprout Road using recycled asphalt pavement through plating case S12532. The Planning Department has reviewed the case and presents the following findings. For approval Criteria 1, we do believe that criteria is met. The petition site is classified as single-family residential. Per the 1995 Girdwood Area Plan Land Use Plan Map 11, the proposed use may appear to conflict with this classification. However, the underlying zoning designation, GR-1, is intended for a variety of housing types to allow for diverse neighborhood aesthetic. The following land use theme of the 1995 Girdwood Area Plan also applies to this case, and that theme is the continued growth of the Girdwood community. The Girdwood community is currently having trouble providing enough housing for both seasonal and permanent workers due to a lack of available long-term housing options. The development of these nine dwelling units will assist in lessening the burden of finding housing for prospective residents. Accommodating prospective residents with this new housing opportunity will grow the Girdwood community. Submitted site plan is in compliance with all dimensional standards. The submitted site plan is also compliant with the landscaping, vegetation, and tree retention requirements. Developments within the GR-1 district are exempt from providing a minimum amount of tree retention. However, the developer is voluntarily holding themselves to the standards of code and will be retaining approximately 25% of the natural vegetation onsite, which exceeds the subject standard for multiple-family and other districts by 5%. In accordance with Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 9, Subsection 070K, Snow Management, approximately 15,000 square feet of paved surface area will be used for vehicular turning and maneuvering area, of which 20% or 3,000 square feet shall be dedicated to snow storage area. This area is mentioned within the narrative of the application but is not shown within the submitted site plan. Because of this, this matter shall be resolved with the Planning Department. In accordance with Anchorage Municipal Code, it also requires pedestrian walkways to paved parking areas and to sidewalks along an adjoining right-of-way. It is unclear to revealing staff if this amenity is provided within this development, and this matter shall also be resolved with the Traffic Department. Compliance with off-street parking standards is demonstrated in the submitted site plan. The parking demand for this nine-dwelling-unit development is 19 spaces. A total of 42 parking spaces are being provided onsite to address community concerns about access parking spilling over into Sprout Road. It's important to note that signed detail was not provided or mentioned in the narrative, but the applicant is advised that should a permanent sign be installed for this development, it shall comply with the standards of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 9, Subsection 070M2 Residential Uses. For approval Criteria 2, we do believe that criteria has been met. The petition site is Zone GR-1, which is Aliaska Highway Mixed Residential, which permits multiple-family dwellings with a density of between four to eight dwelling units per acre, or commonly referred to as DUA, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. This new, multiple-family housing development will add nine additional housing units within Girdwood. Girdwood is currently experiencing a lack of available housing opportunities for those wishing to relocate to this community. The addition of these housing units will help reduce this deficit. Additionally, this use is consistent with the intent of the underlying zoning district and its district-specific standards. The district-specific standards of the GR-1 allow for the placement of more than one structure on a lot, subject to the approval of an administrative site plan review. And it's important to note that this conditional use request supersedes that. For approval Criteria 3, the submitted site plan has shown compliance with both the use-specific standards for a multiple-family housing development, as well as the design standards referenced in Chapter 9 of Title 21. And for brevity, I won't go into detail of each of those standards, but they are noted standard by standard within the staff report under this approval criteria. For approval Criteria 4, the petition site is a rectangular parcel measuring approximately 1.5 acres in size. This lot orientation and size allows for adequate space for the placement of structures, vehicular circulation facilities, accommodation of emergency vehicles, stormwater retention, and drainage facilities, and required landscaping screening that can meet the needs and requirements of the proposed use. And we do feel that that criteria is met. For Criteria 5, we do believe this one is met as well. Neighboring properties will continue to fully enjoy the land use rights and privileges afforded to them upon completion of this project. This multiple-family use will not limit or prevent the development of neighboring properties for uses allowed within their respective zoning districts. A subject parcel is zoned for a variety of housing types and is being developed in accordance with the design standards outlined in Chapter 9 of Title 21. For approval Criteria 6, we believe that criteria is met. The proposed development is similar in scale to other multiple-family structures located along the Aliaska Highway corridor. This residential use is not likely to generate excessive traffic, noise, odor, or dust upon completion. During construction, the applicant will be required to comply with all applicable provisions related to excessive noise, dust, stormwater pollution prevention, and impacts to adjacent roadways from construction equipment. For approval Criteria 7, we do also believe that one is met. The subject parcel is surrounded on three sides by single-family homes. The abutting parcel to the east is owned by the municipality and is largely undeveloped. The petitioner has worked with neighboring residents to mitigate impacts to the natural environment and has taken their concerns into account. In addition, all applicable design standards for a multiple-family development within Girdwood have been met, and it does not appear that surrounding properties will be adversely impacted by this development. For approval Criteria 8, we do believe that criteria is met. The site has direct access to Sprout Road. Sprout Road is classified as a Class 1C Neighborhood Collector under the 2015 Official Streets and Highways Plan. To allow for consistency in road design, aesthetic, and street maintenance, this parcel was previously granted a variance to construct Sprout Road using recycled asphalt pavement through plating action case S12532. The existing road network that will be used by future residents of this development is adequate to support their needs without increasing traffic congestion or negatively impacting the safety of multimodal user groups. The proposed main driveway appears to meet the length threshold of a private street, which may affect the standard it must be constructed to. This matter shall be resolved with the Traffic Department and private development. It's also important to note that fixed route public transportation is available within a quarter-mile of the petition site, and that fixed route public transportation is provided by Glacier Valley Transit. For approval Criteria 9, we do believe that criteria is met. The site is served by public wastewater, but public water is not available. Fire protection is provided by Girdwood Fire and Rescue Department. Police protection is provided by the Whittier Police Department and Alaska State Troopers, and street and stormwater drainage maintenance is provided by the municipality. The department does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions as stated on pages 13 and 14 of the staff reports. I'd also like to bring to attention some late comments that were received. There is a supplementary packet that was distributed to members of the Commission earlier today, or, excuse me, that was distributed to members of the Commission on Friday. And we did also receive one additional comment in opposition very late today from a Dana Durham. So I'd like to bring that to the Commission's attention. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you. And a question for the staff. I see that in Condition Number 3, that resolve with planning the need to provide a compliant snow storage area in accordance with AMC statutes. Has the petitioner identified yet anywhere for snow storage? And I guess my question would be, currently, there's no impact to the neighboring land, neighbors, but until the snow storage is identified, I guess we won't know if there's any impact to adjoining lots. Has that been, has anything been addressed other than the comment from staff number three regarding snow storage?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Strike, the snow storage was addressed in the applicant's narrative, but it was not denoted on the site plan. So the exact location of that snow storage is unknown to staff at this time, but it does appear that there's adequate space onsite to accommodate compliant snow storage area.
Okay, so we'll wait, we'll hear from the petitioner. But one of the questions, and I see that they're actually providing more parking than what is required, so, which is great. I'm just now curious as to whether that additional parking isn't necessarily becoming an area for snow storage. But we'll let the petitioner address that when they speak. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Can we hear from the petitioner?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Lakota.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen real quick. So this is Lakota Chmalauski. I'm with Dow. I'm here tonight representing 3MJ Development for the Powder Run Multi-Family Housing Development Project. Can everybody see the screen that has access to a computer?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Let me, okay. So as, oh, I would like to also reserve any remaining time I have for rebuttal. And we take no exception to the conditions that have been presented by staff. So as staff mentioned, the first thing that we went through was a variance for the upgrades to Sprout Road, which will include the 20-foot-wide wrap roadway surface with gravel shoulders on either side and a five-foot separated pathway. And so on the site plan, you can actually see the roadway improvements are shown, along with the pathway that'll tie into a sidewalk that'll be onsite that leads to each individual unit. So the project was designed to have a triplex on the east side and then three duplex units. And we tried to take advantage of the natural slope that goes from west to east, so that we wouldn't impact the views on the adjacent property. And what we also did was, instead of having, because we could have had three-story units, we went with two-story units to also take into consideration view sheds and to better fit in with the surrounding developments. As you can see on the site plan, stormwater will be collected onsite in this location in a catch basin that'll be connected to what they call an onsite infiltration system. And the intent is that the stormwater would be treated and percolated into the ground. There is a storm drain line, which would be an emergency overflow that goes out to the ditch line on Gunny Sack Mine Road. And we just recently met with the Land Use Committee and GBOS. And they've asked us to look at bringing that storm drain line out to the ditch line in Aliaska Highway, which we are doing. And the reason for that is to keep the vegetative buffer along Gunny Sack, because there is a property right across the project site from our site. Then the sewer line will come in from the main line that's in Aliaska Highway and branch out to serve each unit or group of units. And then there are three wells onsite to serve the units as well. And then I know there was a question about the snow storage, and so we have not denoted it on the plan. And certainly, the additional parking is one place that it could be stored, but there are pockets adjacent to those locations that could also serve for snow storage. So we do not have, see any issues with that, with providing what's required. We also would be required to show it before we could obtain any type of land use permit through the municipality. So one of the big concerns as we worked with the community was... So one of the big concerns as we worked with the community was parking and making sure that parking on-site did not become an issue for the neighborhood, and we didn't see people parking out on Sprout. So as staff mentioned, we have 22 spaces that are required, and then what we're providing is 42 parking spaces, and that includes two-car garages for each unit, two spaces that are located in the driveways in front of each unit, and then six additional parking spaces So one of the other concerns about, from the community, was how much traffic would be generated from the development, and so we, the concern comes from some of the units maybe being rented rather than owner occupied. And so we looked at different ITE trip generation rates to kind of come up with, you know, what would be the worst-case scenario. And so really, the worst-case scenario is if each of the units, which are three bedrooms, were rented out per room, like a hotel, and so that would generate 13 trips in the peak hour, which, you know, it's unlikely that they would be rented that way if, at all. Most likely, they'd be, they would function as like timeshares or just a multifamily housing unit. And just to put that in perspective, the municipality typically doesn't require a traffic impact analysis until you hit 100 trips in the peak hour, so we're well below that threshold. One of the other concerns that folks had was fire access and protection. So we do have on-site fire access, as staff mentioned, and that's the red dashed line that you see coming down the spine road into the site, and it was designed so that the trucks can turn around on-site, and all of those, all the fire department requirements for on-site access are met with this fire lane. And then we also have fire access from Gunny Sack, Sprout, and Aliaska Highway. The other thing to take into account is there's a 20,000-gallon tank across the street on Sprout that was specifically built for fire protection for this area. My understanding, it's not usable in the winter, but it is a feature that helps not only protect this development, but all the developments in the area. Along with that, sprinklers are not required for this type of development, but we, they do require, fire code requires one-hour rated walls between the units, and we actually have two-hour rated walls. So we are meeting all the fire code and building code requirements for this type of development, and actually, in some cases, exceeding them. And then lastly, the density. So as staff mentioned, this particular development is for six housing units, or six units per acre. Although it's slightly higher than some of the surrounding developments, it's important to note that all the area highlighted in yellow is, has the same zoning, and so some of those parcels are vacant or may be redeveloped, and so the densities may increase over time. But you do have densities of three to five dwelling units around this project site. So this is just a rendering of the, or an elevation of the duplex units, which was in your packet, and then the floor plan showing the garage and the bedrooms on the first floor, and then the living space and master bedroom on the second floor, and the triplex unit has the same, has one extra unit, but the same floor plans and elevation. So as staff mentioned, we've been working with the community, that we started working with them as part of the Sprout Road variance, meeting with them a couple times throughout that process, and at that point, we started hearing concerns about what this development might bring and some of the, some of the issues that the residents had. We then also had a community meeting in April and went before the LUC and GBOS twice, really trying to, as much as we could, accommodate people's concerns and incorporate those into the design of this project. So we've tried very hard to really work with the community to have a good development. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Strike? Actually, that may have been from earlier. Commissioner Strike, are you still in the queue, or is that for your question?
No, that was earlier.
All right, are there any other commissioners in the queue at this time?
I will chime in then. I had a question. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors has submitted a letter of objection. I was curious about your response to their request. They wanted to add the following conditions to address their concerns. I was wondering if you have had time to review those issues and what your response is.
So we were at the GBOS meeting when they prepared the draft letter. I have not seen the final letter. From what I understand, some of the conditions are tied to if there were rental units, and so we have discussed with them that in the, in the, that there would be some limitations on, you know, no more than three, or a minimum of three nights, but, you know, it's kind of hard to get too much, too into the weeds until we get past this part of the project to know that we have a project and we can move forward with creating the rules that govern this type of development for the homeowners. And I know there were some, I believe there were some concerns about the fire protection, and I think we have addressed those concerns.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe one of the questions, I know the other ones you addressed were items that wouldn't come at this point, but one was to cap the developments at six units?
Yeah, so, you know, it's always a tough position to be in when you're looking at multifamily development, but we know there is an overall need for additional housing in Girdwood, and so, you know, we really could've, well, with a conditional use permit, we could have done up to 12 units, and, you know, we tried to take into consideration the residents' concerns about that many dwelling units, and so we thought nine was a better fit. It gave opportunity to provide some buffers to the neighbors nearby and take advantage of the slope, but I don't think at this point we would, would really want to reduce to six.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. And this, my question is similar to the Chair's, is addressing the letter of objection from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. One of their comments is, and number two on their, on their letter, is considered access to their, to the property. They, they don't, I think they would rather have it from Gunny Sack or the highway down below, but they don't want it from, from the west there, Sprock. Can you address that, or why they would? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so actually, this came up, we did extensive research as part of the variance, looking at our options for access, and the issue is that Aliaska Highway is owned by DOT, and they have indicated that they will not allow access for this particular parcel. And in fact, the property across Gunny Sack went through a replat, and they have a note on their plat that restricts access to Aliaska Highway. Then we did look at Gunny Sack, and the issue with Gunny Sack is it also doesn't meet municipal requirements, not only for the road surface and cross-section, but also for the longitudinal slope. And so we looked at what would be required to reconstruct it to meet that requirement, and it, it would require constructing it from Aliaska Highway all the way to Sprout, and there's also a sewer main within that right-of-way that would have to be lowered to make that work. So, you know, when you start looking at the cost of that relative to the development, it makes it cost prohibitive, and so that left Sprout as the next option. And again, that also requires some, some level of upgrades, and we went through that variance process to get to the cross-section that's currently approved.
Yes, thank you. Actually, that makes a lot of sense to me. I cannot imagine DOT letting another driveway from down there on the highway. And I also imagine that the Gunny Sack, it has a relatively steep slope, and it wouldn't be near as safe to be entering and accessing from that steep-slope road, whereas Sprock, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right or not, that's a semi-ecological place to access the property.
Yeah, yeah, and of course, you know, the municipality indicated that as soon as we make a connection to Gunny Sack, we have to bring it to municipal standard, and that's, that's when we started looking at what would that involve. So Sprout was the logical connection point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Yes, Commissioner Strike?
Oh, Commissioner Strike, sorry.
Yes, can you elaborate a little bit on the current zoning and what it would allow you to do? My understanding, it would allow you to, currently, without coming forward, forward to this commission, to build a hotel, inn, or multifamily, family housing, and your, this conditional use is specifically to nine units per, for the acreage here.
So, yeah, so...
I guess I'm missing the disconnect here.
Sure, so, so the way the code's written is, if you have less than four dwelling units per acre, then that's a permitted use for multifamily. And so that, for this particular parcel, that equates to five units. Then if you have from four to eight dwelling units per acre, it requires a conditional use permit, so that's, you know, once you, you build the sixth unit all the way up, in our case, to 12 units, you need a conditional use permit. So, so we are asking for nine units, which equals six dwelling units per acre, which is less than what we could ask for under a conditional use permit.
So if you had opted to say, build a hotel, how many-room hotel could you have built?
Oh, um, I don't, I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head. I'd have to go look at code.
Okay, so what I'm trying, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to discern is that the concern raised by the Board of Commissioners and everyone regarding short-term rental is that this property, before you do nothing, before you do anything, can still be used for short-term rental.
Yeah, I think, I mean, yeah, I don't think that's...
If you use for a hotel or an inn.
Sure, yeah, I mean, this development is really truly a multifamily development, it's not intended for short-term rental. I think that's a, you know, just a, I think that for Girdwood, that happens, because it is a resort community, and that's where some of those concerns are coming from for this particular development.
I guess where I'm coming from is, if you did nothing but followed the code and built what was allowed to be built there anyway, you would not be able to address their concerns, because the short-term rental is allowed.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, thank you. I had, I guess, another follow-up question to the letter of objection from the Board of Supervisors, and I think you mentioned you hadn't had a chance to see the final, but they, they also had a section where they identified a couple of issues that they had concerns with that I think you have largely, if not completely, addressed, including limiting the structures to two stories, having additional parking. They also mentioned having the overflow drainage going to the Aliaska Highway, which I think you said you will be looking to do now after further consultation, and then asking for no area lighting of the driveways, except for lighting from individual units. I guess the first question is, is there currently area lighting, or is it just from the individual units?
Yeah, it's actually just from the individual units. There is no plans to, to light the roadway. It'll just be what's on the housing units themselves.
Okay, and then the second question is, to the extent, if it, if it would be necessary to, to kind of ensure that those pieces that the Board of Supervisors was concerned about are included in a condition of approval, would you have any concerns about any of those?
Um, I guess it would depend, I mean, are you, are you saying, like, having a condition that they remain two-story and addressing the parking?
Yeah, and I don't know to what extent it would be required. I guess I would have another question for staff, which of these, you know, given the plans that were submitted, if that, if it would even be necessary or not. But one, for example, is the overflow drainage going to, going to the highway instead of Gunny Sack, since it's not currently shown that way. If that was, for example, a condition of approval, would you have an objection to that?
Um, so I would only ask that it be written to give us some flexibility, because, again, that's DOT right-of-way, so we will try, you know, our intent is to have the overflow drainage go to Aliaska Highway, but we do have to get DOT's permission to discharge to their ditch. So I would just ask for that sort of flexibility.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing no other questions in the queue, I'm gonna turn for public comment. However, before I do that, I just want to make one note on the record. I had originally been viewing this as a multifamily residential dwelling unit, and I hadn't read the letter by the Board of Supervisors, and so I want to disclose that I do have a property in Girdwood off of Timberline Drive that I do rent out on Airbnb, and so I don't think it is disqualifying, but I wanted to throw it out there. If there is any members of the commission that would like to object to me participating, I fully accept you commenting in now.
I would move that you participate.
Moved by Commissioner Strike, I believe seconded by Commissioner Looney. Just to be as upfront as possible, I'm then gonna go through to make sure that, oh, Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, I don't know if you were gonna suggest that we, we kind of go to an individual vote or not, but I, I was just gonna comment that it doesn't seem to me that any aspect of this decision today for this hearing, you know, should affect your property in any, in any way, so I think I would, I would be supporting the motion to participate.
All right, then I will just ask if there are any objections to me participating. Seeing no objections, I will participate. Again, sorry about not noticing that earlier. I'd originally been looking, this is a multifamily. Moving on to our public comments on the phone, we'll turn to that now.
Hi, Melissa, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on Case 2020-0097. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
Individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
Oh, okay. Hold. Okay, Melissa LaRose. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Melissa LaRose. With my husband, I own and reside in the adjacent property at 200 Sprout Road. I also own a lot at 465 Aliaska Highway in the same block. I would like to oppose granting the proposed conditional use permit in this case. The stated zoning intent of GR1...
I'm actually gonna jump in real quick. I have a comment from our commissioners that they can't hear. Yeah, I think that mic has to go down.
I have submitted this via email as well, if it's easier to have it...
All right, we can hear you now, so if you want to start over, Ms. LaRose, go for it.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you.
Ms. LaRose, we can now finally hear you, I believe, so if you want to begin your testimony now.
Okay, I'll begin again. My name is Melissa LaRose. With my husband, I own and reside in the adjacent property of 200 Sprout Road. I also own the lot at 465 Aliaska Highway in the same block, and I would like to oppose granting the proposed conditional use permit in this case. The stated zoning intent of GR1 is to continue the existing pattern of development, and I believe this proposal is a significant departure from that pattern that will negatively impact the surrounding area, that doesn't have the infrastructure development to meet the needs of the relatively high-density build. When reviewing the zoning map for the property, you can see that the GR1 zone follows only the Aliaska Highway corridor, and it's intended to allow greater leniency and development along this highway frontage. Zoning area GR2 encompasses the remainder of the adjacent area across Sprout Road and throughout the mine roads residential community. If you will sort of the zoning regulations here, GR2 area, you can see that it's described as single-family detached and two-family, and it states the intent is to maintain this pattern. As such, the multifamily development in GR2 is not allowable in any way, including conditionally. conditionally. I believe that the intention of GR1 is for high-density uses to be accessed from and oriented towards the highway corridor. This proposed project is attempting to bring a large multifamily development, not through the highway corridor, but instead oriented towards and access through the GR2 area, which isn't compatible with or developed to use in that manner. I understand that there have been challenges with the site slope and access, making lower cost and easier model for the developer to propose access through the GR2 zone and Sprout, but I don't agree that this justifies the additional burden the proposed plan places on the surrounding community.
Thank you, Melissa. Seeing no questions from the petitioner, can we move on to our next member of the public?
Thank you. Hi, is this Alan Rosenthal?
This is Alan Rosenthal.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0097. Are you calling as a representative of a group or an individual?
Uh, I couldn't quite hear because I'm also watching. Um, I, I am, I, I am online for, uh, for testimony tonight. Is that, was that the question?
Are you a, a representative of a group or an individual?
Uh, individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. Um, before you begin, if you could mute what you're watching on TV just so we don't get feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
If you could.
I just muted it.
If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
Yes, my name is Alan Rosenthal, and I'm a, a neighbor on the Gunny Sack Mine Road. Um, uh, mostly the reason I'm, I'm testifying tonight is I read the Board of Supervisors' recommendation for use of Gunny Sack Mine Road as, as the access both for ingress and egress to the property. And I'm, I'm fully opposed to that as ingress or egress because the road is a very steep road. It already has issues both with drainage and just maintenance issues. It's not up to many standards in any way. And even bringing it up to many standards would be extremely difficult in that it is a steep road. And, uh, it would cause traffic hazards on the road, dust hazards. I'm just fully opposed to that as, as one of the recommendations by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. So that's why I'm testifying tonight, to make sure that at least the commission knows that there are properties in the area that are opposed to the use of Gunny Sack Mine Road, uh, as an ingress or egress, or as any kind of supplemental drainage or overflow. I do believe the Aliaska Highway drainage is the best possibility since there are already drainage issues on Gunny Sack Mine, well, due to its steepness. And the issue with DOT possibly allowing it as, uh, Aliaska Highway as the drainage, uh, path for overflow, it doesn't quite make any sense because if you dump into the, on Gunny Sack Mine Road, it immediately flows to, in the Aliaska Highway. So the direct path just going to the Aliaska Highway makes the most sense, it would seem to me. So that's the only reason I'm testifying tonight, to just make sure and clarify, um, my position, um, uh, opposing what the Girdwood Board of Supervisors suggested with access off of Gunny Sack Mine Road. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Seeing no questions from the commis-, oh, Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, um, through the chair, I'd just like to ask if, uh, Mr. Rosenthal has opposition to any other aspects, or does he generally support the project as proposed?
Mr. Rosenthal, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Rosenthal.
Hello, I, I, I can't hear the question on my end.
The question was if you, um, other than the access issues, I believe the, the question posed by Commissioner Spinelli was, um, do you have any other objections to the application or do you support the application?
Well, I, I still can't really hear.
Mr. Rosenthal, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can now.
The question from the commissioner was if you had any other oppositions, um, other than those stated regarding the drainage and access.
Uh, those were my main concerns, that the use of, uh, Gunny Sack Mine Road should not be considered. And it's not what the developer is proposing, so I don't have, I'm not specifically, I am a little bit concerned about, um, uh, rental because of overflow parking onto the neighborhood streets. I, I don't understand why rental is even being allowed. Why don't they just say no rental allowed in their, in their covenants and their agreements with new owners of this property? Um, but that's to be seen because nothing has been written yet.
Commissioner Spinelli, does that answer your question?
Um, maybe if I could just clarify, or I'll put it a li-, a little bit clearer. Does, does he support nine units?
And Mr. Rosenthal, I'm not sure if you heard Commissioner's question, do you support the development at nine units?
Um, I, I don't have a comment on that. I mean, I, I believe that's up to the board and the local neighborhood. I, I don't have a comment on that at this time.
Thank you. Can we hear from our next member of the public?
This is Lee Ellis of Midnight Sun Brewing Company and the Brewers Guild of Alaska. Please leave your message.
Hi Leah, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0097.
Hi.
Hi, are you calling as a representative of a group or an individual?
Individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you may begin.
My name is Leah Ellis, and I live on Gunny Sack Mine Road.
Okay, go ahead. And if that, if that's Lee in the background, we can.
It is, yeah, he was saying like, like my call, his call didn't go through.
Yeah, we can start with his testimony after yours and then restart his time.
Okay, that sounds good. You can do yours after mine.
Go ahead.
Uh, okay, so thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I support and agree with the letter of objection written by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, um, and the comments by Melissa LaRose. Uh, I'm opposed to the current design for the development of more than the allowed five units on this lot. Um, the lot is zone GR1, which does include multifamily housing. However, the original intent of this classification within the Girdwood's area plan for these lots along Aliaska Highway is that they have, quote, direct access to each front of these lots onto Aliaska Highway. So in accordance with that intent, I would have had no problem with the proposed number of units if the driveway were on Aliaska Highway. I realize that's not the case. So as the design is now, with the driveway on Sprout Road, I believe it violates condition five, um, that the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area. Because right across the street along the rest of Sprout Road is GR2 and its single-family homes. Um, the entire mine road neighborhood consists solely of single-family homes. Some have mother-in-law apartments or maybe an accessory dwelling unit, but there are no multifamily condos in this neighborhood at all. Um, just beyond the mine road neighborhood, there's, um, there is a condo unit, but there are driveway exits on the Aliaska Highway. Um, so this, and then additionally, this, um, case document addresses several times that the Girdwood community is lacking in housing for seasonal and permanent residents, which is very true. Yet the developers have not listened to our community's request to introduce a covenant that would limit short-term rentals in these properties. Uh, in fact, they've stated several times that the community might implement, or that they might implement a two or three-night minimum, um, which the Girdwood area plan, again, it, it states, um, it addresses community-based multifamily housing, and what it says, quote, is that this type of housing is intended to be affordable and to be available for both seasonal and full-time residents of this community. So if these units are sold to second homeowners or those looking for an income-generating vacation rental property, which is a very common occurrence in Girdwood, this is nothing to help Girdwood's housing problem. So there should at least be a condition for, you know, one-month minimum lease for short-term rentals. Um, yeah, I don't believe that this property fits into the zoning of the neighborhood. Those are my comments, thanks.
Seeing no other questions, uh, in the queue, I believe we can turn to, uh, Mr. Lee Ellis, if he is available.
Yes, Lee Ellis. You're fine. Lee.
Haley, you have three minutes to provide your testimony. You can begin.
Okay, my name is Lee Ellis, I live at 243 Gunny Sack Mine Road, and I just want to thank the Board, uh, Planning and Zoning Board for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, G-BOSS has put forward a set of conditions that must be met if this development is to move forward. Uh, this is the second time folks have worked on this development, and these conditions are something that, uh, we as a neighborhood have considered over many years, um, for the scope of the project this size. Uh, I do want to bear in mind that this project is more than three times the size of any building, uh, within one mile of this unit, of this project, uh, projected area. Uh, none of the streets in the neighborhood are designed to handle the traffic load of high-density housing, um, even though that they are rated as a collector's street, none of them are built to that standard. In fact, they're pretty narrow and lined down to about one and a half lanes in the wintertime. Um, in terms of surface quality, width, and drainage, uh, there are many different issues in the neighborhood. Furthermore, the neighborhood is heavily freed, and it's not serviced with fire hydrants. There's a system on Sprout across the streets from the, uh, proposed properties that's actually 15,000, not 20,000 gallons. And even with that resource, the ability of the Girdwood Fire Department to fight fires in our neighborhood is very limited. Uh, therefore, I request the Planning and Zoning Board to include the conditions put forth by G-BOSS for the following reasons. Um, attaching a driveway to Gunny Sack would help reduce safety hazards. Uh, we try to get them to push to the highway, and obviously that's been a problem, so we understand that. Um, and so we believe that hooking to Gunny Sack would help reduce a lot of, uh, concerns of the community about traffic on Sprout. Uh, developer claims that the driveway or Gunny Sack Mine is too steep. Um, however, the developer also acknowledged that most people who will be coming on and off the property out the Aliaska Highway will be accessing Gunny Sack Mine Road, so it seems nonsensical to say that a road is too steep for people to drive on and then to expect all the traffic to drive down that road. And at the bottom of that road, there's actually a crosswalk that is heavily used because it's the pathway that meets the bird, Girdwood Trail. Um, so we think that all those safety issues, uh, need to be addressed. Um, restricting the size of the development will help better align the project with the character of the community. There's only one multi-unit housing unit in the neighborhood, and it's around 6,000 square feet and has four units. To have in the project a subunit will help alleviate community concerns on traffic. Three days of house fire protection and conditionally experienced packages will clean complete. TFC has less than 30 minutes of full water capacity in our neighborhood. A structural fire on this property of its size would be near impossible for them to control. A sprinkler system would be critically important to the safety of our community. The water tank is 15,000 gallons with the trucks that they have, that's about 27 minutes of firefighting capacity and only 13 minutes of firefighting capacity in the wintertime. Um, the intent of this developer is to allow short-term rental. We've asked him numerous times, it's probably been the number one thing we've asked him. Um, therefore, this property is most likely not going to be, um, owned by Girdwood residents, so it is not addressing our housing issues. In fact, most of our housing issues, um, are developed from short-term rentals from VRBOs and things like that. Um, so, uh, yeah, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions in the queue, uh, if we could turn to our next member of the public.
Thank you.
Hi, is this Barry Cabana?
Uh, no, this is Tim Cabana.
Oh, we might have gotten the numbers mixed up. Um, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0097.
That was the thing that you asked.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, your time will begin.
No, you, you.
You're doing it, Barry Cabana, Barry.
Um, was this for the, um, the.
Yes, ma'am, it for the Girdwood multifamily conditional use permit?
Okay, well, I just want to say that I'm not for.
Is this Barry Cabana?
This is, well, it's for Barry and Tim Cabana, we both signed it.
We have both of you on here, um, so if you could state your name for the record, your time will begin, and then we'll restart for Tim.
Okay, okay, my name is Barry Cabana.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I just, um, I'm, I guess, uh, providing a conditional use permit for the nine units. I think it should stay at what they're allowed to build over there. It's, it's where, we're in a low-density area. I walk that area every day, and it's a very small lot to put nine units, which would be, I don't know how many people, and, and it's totally out of character for the area. And, um, you know, if, if you allow one person to build there, we have several other one-acre lots, and then this whole area becomes, you know, it's low-density, it becomes high-density area. And, um, I just think that, I just don't think that the roads in this area, it's just not what it's meant for, you know? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We have no questions in the queue, can we hear from, uh, Mr. Cabana?
And Barry, I'm not sure if you were able to hear the chair, um, if Tim could start his testimony?
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll hand the old phone over to Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Tim, if you can state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Yeah, Tim Cabana. Uh, I've lived in Girdwood for 35 years. I've lived, uh, on the, uh, mine roads for, since 1999, and I have property in the Upper Valley, and I actually developed some of the Upper Valley, uh, uh, several, several areas up there, and I still own property up there. Uh, the Upper Valley and the Lower Valley are two different places. There's low-density in the Lower Valley, high-density in the Upper Valley. That's the way it's always been. And that's the way it should stay. Everything down in the Lower Valley is, is a low, this is a low-density area here, this is why the people live down here, not up on the mountain. And, and once you, uh, okay, one of those one-acre lots on the Aliaska Highway, there must be 10 or 15 of them there. Once you okay one of them for high-density, then what's to stop anyone else with a lot there with one house on it from redeveloping it into nine more units there? It would completely change the area of Girdwood, it would completely change. this commission for approval. Minor things such as reorientating, I forget the exact thresholds, I believe it's 10%, you know, vehicular surface area, things like that, very minor changes can be approved administratively, but any major alterations to the site or plans has to be approved by the commission.
Okay. Thank you for confirming that.
Any other questions for the petitioner or staff? Seeing no other questions in the queue, what is the will of the body? Would any of the commissioners like to propose a motion at this time? Commissioner Gardner.
I'll get things started off, I guess. So in the case of 2020-0097, this is a conditional use for a multiple-family dwelling development within the GR1 district in Girdwood. I move to approve with the conditions recommended by the department on pages 13 and 14 of the staff packet.
Thank you. That is seconded by Commissioner Looney. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, yes. So in general, I guess one initial comment I would have is that it does seem like there has been a lot of communication with the community, and efforts to address a lot of the concerns of the immediate neighbors on this site. And I think that has shown through, and changes have been made to reflect a lot of those concerns. It looks like, though, there are a couple of remaining significant concerns that things have focused on. The primary one being the density of this proposal. And I'm not 100% sure where I land on it yet. I think I am inclined at the moment to, to go along and I think approve something that would allow the proposed nine units. And I think that is in part because of the need for housing. I note that in the area plan, there was a section that one of the people who called in commented on. And I recognize that there is differences, and it's a higher density than the immediately surrounding areas, but the plan references that community-based multifamily housing should be dispersed to prevent presumably, at least in this district, them being collected close to each other, so that they can blend in a little bit and help maintain the small town atmosphere. And I think that recognizes that, that while in some cases there may be a need for this, it's not always going to be packed with other multifamily housing. Also, as one of the commissioners had noted, this density level is, is within what's been allowed in this district, and it's not at the extreme high end. I guess I also would go ahead, and I have concerns about the short-term rental that was raised by a number of people as well, and how that could play into effect here. And so I would be willing to consider a motion to have some sort of limitation on short-term rentals, if anyone wanted to propose that. But I'll, I guess, leave it at that for the moment.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion this time? Commissioner Looney, I believe you have a question.
Actually, maybe just speak and make some findings, but part of it is to second a lot of what Commissioner Gardner's already said, but essentially, I definitely appreciate the testimony of the neighborhood, and I realize they have concerns, or things like, a lot of what I heard was first the density, but then the access. And sure, you know, the GR2 properties that are located just west of this are less density, but really, the logical access to this property is really off the common route of Sprott. I'm sure I'm just mispronouncing it every time, but it doesn't really make sense to really use Gunny Sack because it's so steep. And I'm pretty confident that DOT is not going to allow a highway connection, which is really not a good thing to do. So the common connection along Sprott is really the logical place to go, so it's hard to really address, to pass by that concern. Now regarding a special, a limitation or a condition of approval based on limiting the temporary, I guess, rental of this property, I kind of feel queasy on that one. It seems almost unfair to a developer to do that, unless I thought there's other properties all over Girdwood that have the same limitation. And why, why would we single out this one property and provide these limitations for? What would just by that? That's my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I think I'll speak to the short-term rental question as well, and I think that I would not be in favor of a motion to add a short-term.
Hello?
Hey, is this Gerald Fox?
It is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case twenty twenty dash zero zero nine seven.
Okay.
Are you calling?
I...
Before we start, are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
I am calling as an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your name for the record, you can begin.
Okay, my name is Gerald Fox, and I wrote a comment that I don't know whether it got in the record or not, but I will, uh, restate it. I oppose the approval of the conditional use permit for the powder-run multifamily development by MJ Three Development without a restriction prohibiting short-term rentals. The zoning for the development is GR One, and across the street on Spur Road is a residential area zone GR Two. When the original zoning was created, it was thought that the area close to the Aliaska Highway would be good for multifamily units because they would have access to the highway, not into the residential neighborhood. Since that time of the original zoning, the DOT has become reluctant to allow additional driveways from any properties to the highway. Many neighbors, including myself, have concerns about the additional traffic into our residential neighborhood where children play, and many people walk on the road. There is no sidewalk on this road. We have had problems with other short-term rentals, residential, short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods in Girdwood. In a three-bedroom townhouse, there can be multiple different groups renting a single home. There have been lots of parties, noise, and trash concerns for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals create more traffic on the streets that access these properties. In this case, it would mean more traffic for Spur Road. Municipal Code twenty-one dot oh-three dot oh-zero-eight-zero, Part D, Number Seven, states any significant adverse impacts anticipated to result from the use will be mitigated or offset to the maximum extent feasible. Adding a restriction to prohibit short-term rentals seems like an easy way for the developer to offset the adverse impact, impact to this residential neighborhood. And thanks for considering my concerns for this conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
That's my comment. Is there any questions?
We do not have any questions from our commissioners. Thank you.
It's hard to understand that.
There are no questions from the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my comment.
That concludes public testimony.
Turning back to our petitioner, you now have two minutes and thirty-one seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you. So, I will just say that we have worked very hard trying to meet the community concerns throughout this project. As far as zoning, as you can see on the map, all the parcels along Aliaska Highway are zoned as GR One, which would allow multifamily. And although some of the ones that are currently developed have a lower density, they could be redeveloped in the future. Um, and there are properties within the area that have similar densities to what we're proposing here. Um, as far as fire coverage, as I mentioned before, there is the fifteen-thousand-gallon tank across the street. We are meeting all the fire codes as far as access and building codes, and in some cases, um, exceeding what is required for a development of this sort. Um, the drainage, we are willing to look at taking the drainage to Aliaska Highway. We do need to make sure that it would be allowed by DOT, and it is feasible from an engineering standpoint. Um, and again, I think this is a good example of where we listen to the community, we're taking that information in and seeing what we can do to try to accommodate their request. I think the biggest thing is, to understand is that the intent of this development is not to have short-term rentals. It is to have a multifamily development for needed housing in Girdwood. So, we, of course, will look at what we can do through the covenants to address the concerns, but that is why we've had additional parking on site, and some of the things that have come up with the concerns that might happen if these were, were, um, bought and then turned into short-term rentals. Um, but we, we will do what we can through the covenants, because that is not the intent of this development. And with that, I am happy to take any additional questions.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, would the petitioner be, how would they feel about the, I think I read, somebody where a suggestion of a thirty-day minimum for rentals being added as a covenant to the homeowners' association?
Yeah, I, I think the concern is that we're so early on, it's hard to make commitments like that. And, you know, there, it's also balancing, um, how many restrictions you put on this project before it becomes an issue with marketing and selling it. Um, but, you know, they are openly looking at putting some sort of restrictions. Um, it's just difficult at this time to, to commit to, to something like that.
Uh, Mr. Yell, you're in the queue.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify for members of the commission, because there has been a lot of comments in regards to short-term rentals. I just want to clarify that short-term rental is not defined in Title Twenty-One, nor is it something that the planning department would impose on a property like this. Um, so if the commission were to move in the direction of placing a condition of approval on this development regarding short-term rentals, they would have to define the timeframe at what, what would be short-term rental, whether that's thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days, so on and so forth. Um, and they would also preferably tie that into some type of homeowners' association that would oversee and enforce that, because, uh, short-term rentals would not be something that'd be enforceable by the municipality, uh, in, in my personal opinion.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Spinelli?
Um, yeah, this is for staff. If the, if, if the short-term rental language was a condition of approval for the conditional use, then wouldn't the property, if they decided to start operating outside of the conditions of the conditional use permit, then be in violation of muni code or something?
Uh, through the chair, Commissioner Spinelli, that's a, that's a good question, and it would, uh, would be in violation of the conditional use permit, which could, uh, put the validity of the conditional use permit into question. Um, however, it, it would be difficult to enforce that, because you'd have to prove that folks were only there for a given amount of time. Um, and I recognize that that, that could be done through maybe capturing screenshots of Airbnb ads or Verbo ads, but then you'd also have to confirm and follow up. You know, did those folks actually stay there for that amount of time? So, how do you track that? Uh, it can be a little difficult, but, uh, I'm sure there is a way.
Commissioner Looney?
Uh, yes, I just really want to ask, it's probably an obvious question, but the gist of the, of the number of dwelling units. But essentially, it sounds like, um, based on the GR One zoning that's currently there, um, the, the property is allowed to have from four to eight units, um, per acre. So, so really, for this development, they could have anywhere from six to twelve units. Um, and their proposal is really like average of those two. So, it's like right, right down the middle. Am I reading that correctly?
Uh, through the chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and jump in the queue while there's a little bit of a break from questions. Um, my question is for staff. Um, we had a few members of the public comment on the GR One zoning in Girdwood, and a lot of the comments kind of went to the effect that when GR One was created, it was based on this outdated model. However, um, in my recollections of our approval of the twenty forty land use plan, which included Girdwood, I don't believe there were any comments about updating the GR One along Aliaska Highway to make it more of a GR Two. Is that correct?
Uh, through the chair, I, I can't recall any exact discussion regarding the GR One, but, um, I, I guess the best answer I could give to that would just be to point to the intent of the GR One in Title Twenty-One, um, which does state the, the intent of this district is to continue the existing pattern to development as dwelling units are constructed on the remaining undeveloped lots, and to permit development of hostels, inns, and multifamily housing. Uh, so this project does seem well-aligned with the intent of the GR One.
All right, then I guess I just modify my question to more of a comment that the, uh, GR One, uh, zoning was looked at when we did the twenty forty land use plan, and the end result was chosen to keep that area GR One, and that was within... Sorry, Mr. Yell, do you know when the twenty forty land use plan was approved? I want to say two years ago, but I could be wrong.
I believe that's correct. Uh, the exact...
So, within two years?
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner Gardner, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. This question is for staff. Um, and this is maybe an, an easier one, um, staying away for, for the moment from the, the question as to the density. Um, the comments that the Board of Supervisors submitted, and specifically on page two, the conditions that they were asking to be kind of concluded, included, to be confirmed, even though they're, they're shown, um, in the current plan. My, my question is, to what extent is the petitioner or applicant held to the plans as they relate to the two stories, the parking that's shown, and the lack of area lighting? Is that, if we were to kind of approve this as recommended, would that all be something? Would, how much wiggle room would there be, any, with respect to those aspects of the plan?
Uh, through the chair, Commissioner Gardner. So, the plans that are before you tonight is what you would be voting on. Um, and if you look at, um, condition number two on the staff report on page thirteen, it says, "All constructions shall substantially conform to the following submitted application, narrative, and plans on file with the planning department, except as amended." Um, and then it points to the specific plan sets. So, the applicant is tied into the plan that they have submitted for review with this application. Um, they would not be able to simply tack on another story, a third story, onto this development without any type of oversight or approval. Um, I do believe if they were to tack on, or, or desired to tack on a third story, that that would classify this as, as a major amendment to the CUP, which would then, uh, go back before this commission for approval. Minor things such as reorientating, um, I forget the exact thresholds. I believe it's ten percent, you know, vehicular surface area, things like that. Very minor changes can be approved administratively, but any major alterations to the site or plans has to be approved by the commission.
Okay, thank you for confirming that.
Any other questions for the petitioner or staff? Seeing no other questions in the queue, what is the will of the body? Would any of the commissioners like to propose a motion at this time? I believe if you turn to page thirteen and fourteen of your packet, there are department recommendations. Commissioner Gardner?
I'll get things started off, I guess. So, in the case of twenty twenty zero zero nine seven, this is a conditional use for a multiple-family dwelling development, um, within the GR One district in Girdwood. I move to approve with the conditions recommended by the department on pages thirteen and fourteen of the staff packet.
Thank you. That is seconded by Commissioner Looney. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, yes. So, in, in general, I guess one initial comment I would have is that it does seem like there has been a lot of communication with the community and efforts to address a lot of the concerns of the immediate, um, neighbors on this site. Um, and I think that, um, has shown through, and changes have been made to reflect a lot of those concerns. Um, it looks like, though, there are a couple of remaining significant concerns that things have focused on. The primary one being the density of, of this proposal. Um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure where I'd land on it yet. I think I am inclined at the moment to, um, to go along and I think approve something that would allow the proposed nine units. Um, and I think that is in part because of the need for housing. Um, I note that in the area plan, there was a section that, that one of the people who called in commented on. Um, and I recognize that it, that there is differences, and it's a higher density than the immediately surrounding areas, but the plan references that community-based multifamily housing should be dispersed, um, to prevent presumably, at least in this district, them being collected close to each other, um, so that they can blend in a little bit and help maintain the small town atmosphere. And I think, um, that recognizes that, that while in some cases there may be a need for this, um, it's not always going to be packed with other multifamily housing. Also, as, um, one of the commissioners had noted, this density level is, is within what's allowed in this district, um, and it's not at the extreme high end. Um, I guess I also would go ahead, and I, I have concerns about the short-term rental that was raised by a number of people as well, and how that could play into effect here. And so, I would be willing to consider a motion to have some sort of limitation on short-term rentals, um, if anyone wanted to propose that. But I'll, I guess leave it at that for the moment.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion this time? Commissioner Looney, I believe you have a question?
Uh, actually, maybe just, uh, speak and make some, some findings. But, uh, part of it is to second a lot of what Commissioner Gardner's already said. But, uh, essentially, I definitely appreciate the testimony of, of the neighborhood, and I realize they have concerns or things like, a lot of what I heard was first the density, but then the access. And sure, you know, it, um, the, the, um, the GR Two properties that are located just west of this, um, are less density. But, um, really, the, the logical access to this property is really off the common route, Spur. I'm sure I'm just mispronouncing it every time, but it doesn't really make sense to really use Gunny Sack because it's so steep. And I'm, I'm pretty confident that DOT is not going to allow a, a highway connection, which is really not a good thing to do. So, the common connection along Spur is, is really the logical place to go. So, it's hard to really address, uh, to pass by that concern. Um, now regarding a special, a limitation or a condition of approval based on, um, limiting the, the temporary, I guess, rental of this property, I kind of feel, um, queasy on that one. It seems almost unfair to a developer to, to do that, unless I thought there's other properties all over Girdwood that have the same limitation. And why, why would we single out this one property and provide these limitations for it? Um, what would just by that, is my question? Thank you.
Commissioner Krishna?
Thank you. I think I'll speak to the short-term rental question as well, and I think that, um, I would not be in favor of a, a motion to add, uh, short-term rental limitations, um, for the reason that, um, this zoning district specifically, um, mentions in the intent, um, that, you know, permitting development of hostels and inns is, um, you know, allowed. And so, that would seem to me to directly conflict with, um, any limitations on short-term rentals that we would propose for this specific parcel. Thank you.
I'm going to jump into the queue as well there and say that I also would oppose a short-term rental, um, provision added on to this. I can understand why individuals would want that. However, I can't say anything unique to this property. And I also agree that Commissioner Krishna makes a very good point that it would go against the purpose of the zoning and almost put it in conflict with the zoning itself. Commissioner Gardner, I see you. Are you making another motion in the queue?
Yeah, I figured, I guess, I maybe should have right out of the gate, since we're talking about short-term rental. I think I'll, I'll just put a motion on the table, um, and so that, that can be kind of specifically addressed and discussed and resolved. And so, I would move to amend my main motion to include as a condition of approval that, um, I guess, we'll just say a thirty-day, um, minimum stay for any, any rental.
Move by Commissioner Gardner. Is there a second? Seeing no second, that motion does not move forward. Um, back to our, uh, main motion on the table. Are there any other comments, findings that people would like to make before moving for a vote? Specifically addressing AMC twenty-one dash zero-three dash zero-eight-zero D, the approval criteria? Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, I think it meets the approval criteria, um, consistent with the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, the continued growth of the Girdwood community. Um, I think it is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district. Um, as noted, it permits the development of hostels, inns, and specifically multifamily housing. Um, I already spoke to the, where I think the, the kind of toughest aspects of the approval criteria, which relates to the compatibility with uses on adjacent properties with respect to the density. I also would note that, um, the specific issues identified in the Board of Supervisors' letter of objection, there were some that they asked to be formally included as conditions of development that they had already spoken with and the developer had addressed, um, including the height limitations, the parking requirements, and light pollution. I understand that there's no need to include those three aspects as a condition, because it's included in the plans that are already, um, required as a condition to comply with. There's a question about the overflow drainage, when, whether it could connect to the Aliaska Highway. I don't see need to include that as a specific condition, um, because it sounds like they are already working with, um, um, the, as well as an agency to get that done, and it will depend a little bit on that discussion. Um, there were concerns with respect to, um, as well, access to the Aliaska Highway or to Gunny Sack. Um, we heard testimony that that either was not permissible or didn't make sense, given the limitations of Gunny Sack. And, um, I guess I'll leave it at that.
I will chime in with a couple findings of my own. Um, according to approval criteria, uh, for, uh, that you must, uh, any significant adverse impacts anticipated to result will be mitigated or offset. I'd like to note that the petitioner has, um, in providing increased parking to make sure that that parking does not go onto those residential streets. Also, um, one aspect that was brought up by a member of the public was altering the character in the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits and pares or prevents the use of surrounding properties for the permitted uses in the underlying zoning districts. Um, while this may, any development or any new building will alter the character and the, how its, uh, neighborhood looks aesthetically, this is not going to substantially limit or impair the surrounding properties for them to be able to use their permitted uses. Um, so I do feel it meets that approval criteria in that regard as well. Um, any other findings or comments before we move for a vote? Seeing no one in the record, call for vote. Commissioner Strike?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That motion passes. That wraps up all of our agenda for today. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Commissioner Looney, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Um, before we formally adjourn, I just want to thank all the commissioners again, bearing with me if I don't see you in the queue, um, for letting me know if we can't hear someone on the phone. Um, I also want to thank all of our staff for all the extra work that they have to put in to make these telephonic and participations happen. And I think we're getting better and better at them, but, um, as we continue to run up to obstacles, I just want to thank you for all of your work that you guys have been doing. And, um, yeah, thank you. Meeting adjourned.